Uh, let's call meeting to order. Can I get a motion to open the meeting? Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Hi.
Let's stand for the flag. Hi.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We will start with public input one. Anybody for public input one? Yeah, come on up. State your name to the record.
James Kinnear, high school teacher, TASH president. I just want to acknowledge Linda Sinlinski from a teacher's standpoint. We're going to be honoring her later on this week as well. But Linda has been an expert math teacher in our field. And she's had my kids. I've been a parent in her role. And particularly in my younger daughter's education life, Linda was particularly important to her. And for Barbara Beckhamis, someone that was a teacher, a union leader, and administrator, and both of you friends, I just want to thank you for your service to the Sag Harbor School District. Sag Harbor School District has been much better off because of you and for your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I would like to thank Stephanie Bittes. This is as disappointed as I'm sure you are. This is your, and I want to thank you for your three years here. Your frankness and willingness to speak your mind in a very straightforward fashion has been very much appreciated. And I want to thank you for your three years here.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Anybody else for public input one? Okay. At this time, we'll move into board recognitions. And Mr. Kinnear mentioned this is Stephanie Bittes' last meeting. And I just want to say that I've really enjoyed serving with you and I love what you've brought to the board.
Thank you.
There was a lot of times that you made us all laugh when we needed to laugh. So we definitely appreciate that. And also your straightforward candor in kind of seeing like what the big picture is and getting things done. That forward thinking is really, really appreciated. And I thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
And the board touches something?
No, just that.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, just go like that.
You know, when I won, at the front door, there was a unmarked bottle of Stoli with no note. I still don't know who left it there three years later. My comments, which will timed, cost you six minutes. I'll hold till public input two.
All right. Now we'll move to the principals' recognitions.
Good evening, everybody. And I do echo the thank you to Stephanie. Thanks for all your service on the board and also the continued support you've always given to elementary school. It's much appreciated.
Thanks, Matt.
Congratulations to Linda.
You will be missed.
I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Elizabeth Ayers. I spoke to her actually over the weekend and she regretfully is not able to make it this evening. But on behalf of everyone at the elementary school and everyone who has had children go through the Sag Harbor District over the last few decades, we thank Liz for her service as a teaching assistant. She's been a wonderful support in the classrooms and also with her experience as a teacher of reading. She provided important support and remediation to students who may have been struggling as early readers. So we thank Liz. We wish her all the best and we hope she enjoys the time with her husband, Tom, and her children and grandchildren. So thank you, Liz Ayers.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I have the honor of speaking about Linda Sinlinski, who, believe it or not, I think we've been here about 22 or 23 years, I believe, which places you back around '95 or '96. But I first met Mrs. Sinlinski in 1982. I was an ocean lifeguard for the village of Southampton and she was a trustee in charge of the beaches. She was my boss. And at 16 years of age, she's always been very principled. I was a little afraid of her. When I came here at 30 years of age as an assistant principal, it was a different environment and a different context. But what I've come to know and appreciate is that she is a true professional. She sets very, very high standards for her students. She's taught everything from AP Calculus down to seventh grade and helped students in sixth grade. Those students who've had her over the years always point to her as one of the finest teachers they've ever had. She is... She's also got a very soft side. There have been students over the years, one or two in particular that I can think of, one in particular, who she took into her household for a period of time while that student was having a hard time, but was never the type to boast about it or even talk about it. So these kinds of acts went unnoticed, but I noticed them. And she's a... I know her family pretty well over the years. She's got a wonderful husband, Bob, and she's got four wonderful sons who I also know pretty well. And the type of people that they turned out to be is a testament to both her and her husband. Just a very, very high quality person. She'll be missed by the Pearson community, but I wish her the best in retirement. I wish her health and happiness with her husband, her children, and her grandchildren. So on behalf of the Board of Education, this is a token of appreciation that I'm supposed to hand to you, Mrs. Sinlinski.
And I'm going to need a little help from my elementary principal and my middle school, high school principal. Come on up here with me because I can't do this alone. I've only... I'm only starting my fifth year. And I'm here to recognize our marvelous PPS director, Barbara Beckhamis. When I came here, Barbara was leading our special education programming, our guidance department, our English as new learners. And one of the things you find out as a superintendent or assistant soup for curriculum and instruction is where the leadership is, is what makes it to your level and what doesn't make it to your level. And I felt a little lonely when it came to my special needs families because I didn't get to see them. I didn't get to meet them because they didn't call me. Because Barbara leads with her heart. She's beautiful, problem solving. She's a wonderful visionary, but she leads with her heart. She listens and she learns about every single family. And she will stay for as long as it takes. She will bring her team together and she will make sure that by the time that child is 35, they're going to be living a happy life. Nothing is short term with Barbara. She is so thoughtful. I'll need a little help from my fellow leaders here, but I know that from Mary's notes, she started in 1995 as a teaching assistant. And that's what we call spiraling up in complexity, when you can start as a teaching assistant in 1995, becoming a special education teacher, becoming an assistant principal in our middle school. And then, I think she thought she was coming back home by leading the PPS. Oh, oh, really? If I'd been here, I would have taken you aside and gone, "What were you thinking?" But no, instead, her leadership has done a wonderful job of building programming for every single child, but then meshing it together to make sure all of our children have been served and as many of our children are here as possible and making it all. She also took on a leadership task I would never recommend, and that was being the TASH president, which Mr. Kinnear, she talked him into it somehow. I don't know. But he can tell you right now that it's like being a Little League umpire. How to make sure that nobody likes you is be a Little League umpire or be the TASH president. It's... There's no winning, but it's because you do it for the good of the order. And so I don't want you to go, but I do want you to go on and enjoy your family and enjoy your wonderful husband and enjoy the time. But I will miss you so much. Okay. Just a couple of good, quick things.
All right. I thought you said that beautifully. I had the pleasure of working with Barbara in numerous roles. We taught together when the inclusion model came into our district. I had the pleasure of working with Barbara as the regular teacher alongside her special ed expertise in the fourth grade inclusion class. I think we did a nice job working together and I learned a lot working alongside Barbara. She's an excellent teacher. She's always been wonderful to her colleagues, but more importantly, so kind and caring to children. She was an outstanding teacher of reading and I know my predecessor, Ms. Frescano, tapped her often to work with some of the students who needed the most intervention in that area. We were assistant principals at the same time, so we often shared ideas about what it was like to move from teaching into administration. And then over the last few years, as the elementary principal, working alongside Barbara as our PPS director, we've been through some challenging moments, but I'm grateful that I've had Barbara to talk things over with. She had a knack for... Sometimes I get upset. I don't really show it, but sometimes I get upset. And she had a real great knack of calming down.
I can do that for me.
Good team. And I'm going to miss her, of course, but I know she's looking forward to spending time with her husband Fred and her wonderful children and her family. So I wish her all the best.
Thank you.
All right. So Barbara, I was... I'll be glad. I was the principal and Barbara was the TASH president during a pretty difficult time in Sag Harbor in terms of the status of contract negotiations. And at that time, she always struck me as a... I knew her in that context as a principled, reasonable, thoughtful person. So when an assistant principalship opened up, I suggested to Barbara that she would be great in the role. And she was. I think we worked alongside each other for about five years or so. And I would echo everything that Matt and Katie have said about her compassionate, thoughtful desire to make sure that students reach their potential. And I told a story the other night that when my daughter, who's now going to be a senior in high school, was in second grade, the other night we had a celebration. That's when I told this story. We got together for dinner. But when she was in second grade, they had ability groupings and they put Olivia, my daughter's name, in the slowest reading group. And her self-esteem was pretty bad coming home. And I knew that Barbara had a lot of experience in reading instruction. So I hired her to work with my daughter. She worked with her for several years. And I saw tremendous change in Barbara's, in Olivia's, reading and her attitude towards school. And a lot of that had to do with the patience and the care that you showed my daughter. So I'll be forever thankful for that. And I think that same approach you showed day in and day out with the kids at Sag Harbor. So I thank you for that. And like Katie and Matt, I know you're looking forward to retirement, spending time with Fred and your three kids and friends and the family. So best of luck. I'm going to miss you, Barbara. Sag Harbor, we miss you. Thanks.
I've been giving these people a lot of hugs.
Why don't we give a community hug?
It's like a family, right? This is just off the top of my head, but I guess for the past month or so, you have to psychologically prepare to leave something that you've been doing for so many years. So like whether I was walking to the elementary school and walking on the bricks saying, "Gosh, how many years have I done this?" Or going through the halls or just everybody I would stop to talk to, like in the back of my brain, there was this acknowledgement, like it's sort of like the last time. And I want to say that, oh, I'll come back and visit and, you know, we'll keep in touch. But I sort of know what happens. Plus, I don't live in Sag Harbor, you know, and I'm not going to miss the commute. And that's for sure. But I just think about all the people that I know here, starting from all the teachers in the elementary school and then all the middle school teachers. And there's so much overlap that I have relationships with the high school teachers. I know all the preschool people out here. It's mind boggling how many friendships that I've made. And I realize in a school, even though we're all working together and it's about the professionalism, you know, you celebrate everybody's birthdays and weddings and, you know, tragedies. And there's just so many things you go through with everybody every single day. We spend more time with each other than sometimes our own families. So just, it's bittersweet, you know? I'm definitely ready to move on. Like I know that I'm ready to move on. Being a PPS director definitely prepares you. I think my heart is always having been a teacher. And I think being the assistant principal, I was around the kids and the drama and that's what energized me. And when you become a director of PPS, it's just tons of meetings and paperwork. And that's not really why I went in, you know? But it was something that I always thought I wanted to do. And, you know, thinking back, I feel like I really strengthened a lot of our programs and that the teachers are doing some really good things. But, you know, it's just time for me to move on. And somebody said, "Sunday nights are great." So thank you for everything. I appreciate everybody's support all the time. Katie, thank you so much for your support. You were the first superintendent when you came to work for the district. I think within the first week, you came down and you sat and talked to me and introduced yourself. You told me about your background. And I didn't have any other superintendent who was so in tune into supporting special education or that I could go to to problem solve and, you know, really have someone who could hear me and, you know, make decisions with me. So I really thank you for that. That was really terrific.
Wonderful.
And Matt and Jeff and Britt. I'm just looking at everybody, you know? I sent a thank you note to the teachers. We had a little get together Friday night and I was thinking, I almost want to name everybody because I have a lot of stories, you know? But it's a lot of people. So thank you, everybody. And I will come back. Invite me to like the next retirement party. So thank you very, very much. And Stephanie, good luck to you. Congratulations. And Linda, to you too. I really did enjoy working with you as assistant principal. Linda would be here. Like I would be walking the halls before 35 o'clock and who's sitting at her desk, toiling away, figuring out the grades. And you were always here, so you were always somebody I could talk to in those later hours. And I remember our chats and I just wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
What did I actually click? Is it coming? Oh, there we go. Okay.
Got it.
Okay. Got it. You wouldn't know that I actually do like technology. So Susan Duff, I am the eighth, 12th grade history teacher. And I am also a part of the policy committee. I am here to present our drafts for the fundraising policy and regulations as well as the student government handbook. You should have all gotten two handouts. The first one, the first page is the fundraising policy. And then the next three pages are the regulations. And then obviously the handbook, which is more like protocols. So the policy and regulations, who is included? When it comes to fundraising, we designed the policy to include the schools and the district, which would be your student organizations and clubs. Also, school affiliated organizations within the district like the PTA, PTSA, and the Booster Foundation, those types of organizations. The purpose is to promote education and the best interest of the students, enhance school related activities and events as well as participation, making sure the participation is available and accessible to all students and ensure the safety and wellness of participants. One of the things we included specifically, if you had time to look over it, was the no door to door sales because that is inherently unsafe for children. So we wanted to make sure that that was reiterated in there a few times. Regulations, which are again, different than the policy itself because the regulations can be changed. We hope that the policy is more enduring and the regulations can be adjusted with time. The principles was that the fundraising should be student driven and managed. Decisions should be determined by consensus. They should vote before they have the fundraisers and what they're going to raise money for. The accounts will be managed and maintained by the students, but obviously under district guidelines and New York state rules and regulations, laws. The established procedures need to be followed with the guidance from the advisors and the district. The... When it comes to actually the fundraisers, there's approval process. And it requires the student input and again, the vote. The student council would approve it. And then after that, it goes on for administration approval. And one of the new things that we wanted included was a district-wide calendar to post all of the different events and activities on. Regarding charitable organizations, the organizations have to be authentic, vetted charitable organizations. They have to... Can't just be some random thing. Because sometimes the kids come up with very random stuff. It's got to be a well-established organization. Again, the student council has to approve it. District funds may not be used because this is considered a private activity, not related to the schools. And the money collected must be dispersed as advertised. So even, you know, if something else comes up, they can't change their mind. It has to go for what they determined initially with the approval process. Gifts, this was... I guess it happens more at the elementary school than the high school and middle school level, but they tend to get very elaborate and costly gifts for the teachers. I believe there's supposed to be a state law that's capped at like $75. So we included the policy that they... Or not policy, I apologize, regulation, that they refrain from soliciting money from parents for the purpose of providing large elaborate gifts. Honestly, the best thing for teachers, have your child write like a really nice thank you note. Or, you know, even you could write a thank you note, thank you, you know? And that means so much more to the teachers than elaborate gifts and things like that. So we encourage that. Then we have the draft of the student handbook, which is the red and black one. And this would fall more under protocols, right? Because this is less than regulations. And this was created with the intent that students would have input and help design the program, that it wouldn't be dictated by staff or administration and things like that. So you can imagine how challenging it is to get students to give input this time of year. So it's...
Some are going to be workshopping with students this summer so that they can have...
It's been a little challenging. But basically, what we came up with is that the mission is to be empowering students and providing a voice for improving student life within the school community. The Student Government Association, SGA, has the positions and they're all explained in the handbook. There's guidelines for each position and for the activities related to the Student Government Association. And also ways to run effective meetings because again, those are skills that the kids need to learn and develop over time.
So one of the examples, which I thought was great, that the team I was on on this put in that the board's using is the cheat sheet for Robert's Rules.
Yes, that's in our...
So that's a piece of one of the appendix.
Yes, that's an appendix.
You know, I'm going to go all the way to the end here, but I bet you in eighth grade, it does better than the board with Robert's Rules. Okay, keep going.
After teaching eighth grade, I bet to differ. So this would also provide guidelines for the students regarding homecoming from and Whaler Day. As the grades develop, they get a better understanding of what they're supposed to do. It would be beneficial for them to have it in a handbook upfront. And hopefully, some of the lower grades could be a little... Have a better understanding of what they should do for those activities. For example, like Whaler Day, they need to buy T-shirts well in advance, right? So they have to do all that. The best practices for fundraising, the types of fundraising, the process, the whole... Like why are you doing it? What is the money going towards? The purpose is all spelled out in here. The...
And one thing I do want to be...
Chase Malia came up with this draft.
And we want to be like environmentally friendly examples. So because sometimes when they brainstorm, they're, you know, that's hard. That's hard on advisors. So trying to create, just continuing to add to the list of types of fundraisers that are environmentally friendly, that gives the children a real learning process.
That go along with our health and wellness policies. We did that last year. Yes. And again, the purpose is really important too because we've had... Some of the input we got was that kids and parents didn't know what they were raising money for. So that's, it's very important to have that in there so they do understand where these funds are going and the significance of it. The elections, again, how to run a campaign, the voting process. This year, I believe Mr. Kinnear had them come in with the voting machine so the kids voted just the way we all do when we go into the process, which was great. And it encourages them to participate and run for office because it seems more legitimate. It makes it a more authentic process. Plus, it gives them, as a history teacher, I love that they have the voting experience before they actually walk into a voting booth for the very first time for a major election. In the back, there's reference materials, the appendices. I'm not sure if that's the proper English when I say the appendix. We have the Student Government Constitution, the Robert's Rules with the cheats sheet, the Sag Harbor Union Free School District Policy, which I already went over. And then there's some forms that we included there. The approval form, which we used a lot of what came from, I think it was the PTSA, because we wanted to make sure that we covered all of the, like the purpose and the goal of the fundraisers. So that's all in there. Parent-student acknowledgement, which doesn't seem to be in this draft right now. I don't know that that made it in there, but there was also a form. And that's to help keep parents informed when fundraisers are going on because a lot of times, parents are unaware. As much as teachers and advisors and other people try to get the word out, kids, we all know, they come home and they go... Parents say, "Oh, how was school today? Is there anything I should know about?" "No, it was fine." You know, so this, having them have a form signed should help with that. And then request for payment. So that the request for payment is to help the students become familiar with how you would get the check through the business office. And there were some things that were brought to our attention as part of the policy committee that people wanted to change. But some things fall under the Student Government Constitution in which we don't have control over because it is a student-run organization. So if they want to change the constitution, they have to have a meeting to do that, propose amendments or changes and things like that. It cannot be dictated from us down... It cannot be dictated from us down to the student population because it's the student government.
They have to ratify it.
Yeah. So, I think that's it. I try to keep it brief as possible. Any questions?
Yes.
Okay, so on the student fundraising, oh wait, is it, is it okay if I talk? Okay. On the fundraising form at the end, it says, will the students and staff be solicited on school property? Didn't we go through that? Did, what, what did we say about that? Can't do that, right? Not that I wanna open up a can of worms, but.
This is not a can of worms, these are drafts and that's why we do it.
Oh, this is only a draft.
So, this is all drafts, so that can actually.
The only two questions I would ask is, is the two things that everybody in the community constantly talks about?
Yep.
Which is, can I sell pink hats during school? And the answer was loudly, no. And then the other question is, why can't we have a bake sale? Why do we have to sell healthy oranges? So, in your drafts and redrafts, are you gonna tackle those two questions that are really what the kids are asking? Or is that the health and wellness policy?
Well, my understanding, and I could be sadly misguided, but my understanding is not that they can't have, well, bake sales is if you have home baked goods that has health issues, but that there have to be healthy options. So, it doesn't have to, that there has to be healthy options if they do something. So, you could sell, like when they do parent-teacher conference and have a bake sale, they can sell baked goods, but they need to also have healthy options there.
Well, that's a, that's a wonderful, so then let me be specific. An intermission in the high school musical for sale on the table
Right.
is water, fruit, and Hershey bars. That's where I'm getting at, right? Now, all the Hershey bars get sold and the poor mother that donated the apples does take them home and make apple pies, but there's a healthy alternative there, right? So, is that, or do you want me to be quiet? I only have till ten o'clock, so let me know what you want me to do here. Or is that a health and wellness policy?
We're saying it has to be in compliance with the health and wellness policy.
Yeah, and, and. And that would be, right? It's got to be healthy options.
Healthy options.
There just have to be choices.
Okay.
That's it.
Because you don't want somebody who wants that piece approved and then it's not there.
All be wrong, sure. And it has to be something good there.
It's gotta be some healthy options.
Some healthy options.
Okay.
And as far as the other question that you had, will students and staff be solicited on school property? Then that, if that's a, that will be removed from the form because it's not supposed to be there. Because it's a draft.
This is, this is a draft, right? But we're hoping to have this all done and ready by the first meeting in August.
Okay, so then let me just tell you how we contradict ourselves. Help me, Brittany, please. Middle school used to be PS I Love Your Day, now it's something. And I believe you could have bought a rose for somebody?
That's.
Or is that, that's different?
That's high school.
That's high school. Okay, so is that a fundraiser on school property? I just think we send out constant mixed signals.
The stick it to love day doesn't have any.
That's, so I'm confusing that, I apologize, I'll back up.
We're giving candy canes.
Valentine's Day, it was, it was Valentine's Day.
Valentine's Day and sometimes they do, they did stuff that.
They wrote, they sold roses.
They sold roses and for a dollar, you could buy a rose and then it would be delivered for you with a note to who you bought the rose for.
Right.
But that, I don't think that was direct, that was at a, that was at a, at a table or something. I don't think they, we weren't pounding on people's doors. We weren't going door-to-door.
No. No, it's, it's about, and I'm sorry, only because you can, and this has nothing to do with you, so.
No, no, we're, this is what we do, this is our job, is teasing these things apart and then putting them back together.
Right, because the, here's what you hear constantly. The school has no concrete policy and it's wishy-washy. Can we or can we not sell Hershey bars in intermission at, at the play? And if the kids do fundraisers in school, knowing where the money is going, all the right ways, then some of those things like selling a rose in school has to happen in school on Valentine's Day. It doesn't make sense to sell them on Sunday before.
We'll have to work on that.
Yeah, you're, yes, I mean, and I think what we probably would have to tease out is something that would say that maybe they could have a booth or a stand in a specific place where people could go to it, opposed to students going door-to-door and soliciting it, right? So, like maybe they have a table set up in the commons or in the cafeteria or both. Or, and then that way, it's not them going around.
But we're, that's a good one that we'll have to bring out to the policy group to, to vet that because when we, we'll have to look at past fundraisers.
And that would actually probably not fall under policy. That would probably fall under the regulations or the protocol, but yes.
You're a hundred percent correct, which is why I say it really doesn't have to. But at the end of the day, that's what, that's what everybody asks.
Right, that's, that's a good one.
And if you set up a table, actually, that's a brilliant idea. If you set up a table in our place.
Right.
Like build a fundraising, black and red lemonade stand and plunk it somewhere that everybody gets to use, then you're consistent.
And if you're not, like, you want us to avoid places like the cafeteria where kids might feel pressure, but where kids flow through, then there's no pressure.
Right.
Because you don't want them feeling like they have some pressure. Right. So, that's, that's a good one for us to work on for as a part of this, yeah.
Any other questions?
I have questions. Before I get to my questions on this, I was late, so I missed the recognition of Stephanie. So, Stephanie, I just want to say how much I know we're all gonna miss you. We're gonna particularly miss not only your sense of humor because you actually made these meetings fun, but your directness and your ability to cut right through the gobbledygook and bring clarity to all of us. So, I'm really sorry to see you go and it's been fabulous serving with you.
Thank you, Susan.
On this, I echo what Stephanie says. My big question though was when I read this, the only big difference I thought I saw was the door-to-door, which is great, but the PTSA had come to us with a bunch of concerns. And I don't remember specifically what their concerns were. And is there any, I don't see if PTSA first saw the audience. Because I think my big question was, did we address their concerns? And have they, is there gonna be an opportunity where they can review this? Because I think they had some pretty specific issues.
We, well, we, we, go ahead.
They did come to a meeting with, we had a meeting with them and we worked on this after that meeting. The approval form actually addressed quite a few of their concerns. Some of the things were already being done, like the election process and stuff like that. So, that.
And then I followed up and went to one of their meetings, which was fabulously attended. We had, they, it was at the John Germain Library and went through all the things that we were doing. And then Chase had a meeting with the exiting folks and the entering folks there, team leaders, and went through the whole handbook. So, I think they've had a lot of face-to-face. There were things we couldn't do because it was contract or it was student government and so they have to ratify, so those things we couldn't address.
Okay. I just wanna make sure.
Because I think one of their big ones was the grade levels running for different offices, but that's constitutional, so the student body would have to address that.
Yeah.
And then just two other quick questions. One is, when you talk about it being dispersed as advertised, what is our oversight process on that? Like, how do we ensure that what we're raising money for actually goes to what we say it's going to?
Well, the, if it's a charitable organization, right? If they're raising money for charity, the charity has to be vetted and it has to be a legitimate charity. And then the, they would put in for a check from the business office and then that would go there.
Okay, so the monies, monies they collect go into the school and then the school has the check? So, that's the oversight, okay, that, I was just curious about that.
Yes, because, and if you go through a lot of the, a lot of the protocols in the handbook talk about the handling of the money, which I didn't get into here because it all has to follow state laws and guidelines. But it goes into that all the monies have to be deposited. They're not allowed to have any cash transactions. They have to submit to get checks. It's not a purchase order because it's not through the district, right? It's a club. So, they have to submit to get the checks and that whole process is included in, in this.
And then my last question is, this is the one fundraising policy for the whole district, correct? It's not just for Pearson?
No, it's for the whole district. And we've also folded in the Booster Club, PTA, PTSA, since they really were kinda like the mothership, that we're asking them to also follow our, to do as we do. So, that since they are an arm of us, we've added them under the protocols and, or the regulations and the policy as well.
Okay, because, and I just, I mean, I read this earlier today, so I don't recall, but you've mentioned a couple of things about the students being the guiding principle and obviously that would be very different in the elementary school than, I mean, really the fundraisers are driven by the PTA in the elementary school, whereas I think more of it is driven by the students here. So, is that something that's addressed in the handbook? Because I don't recall.
So, and if you look in the, in the policy, the policy, we talk about the, that there's also the agencies. So, when she talks about the fact that the Booster Club, PTA, and PTSA also have to fall under the regulations and guidelines as well. So, we speak to them as a separate entity, but they still have to follow this, these, these guidelines.
And when you look at the handbook that you're speaking of, it's the Pearson student government.
Right, right.
Right, so that's not gonna apply at the elementary school.
That was applicable here.
Yeah, so that doesn't apply at the elementary school.
That was it for me, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I wanna do a big shout-out to the policy committee. Because they, they did subcommittee work and they really did this independently. Like I said, where Chase was meeting with the outgoing PTSA, the incoming PTSA government. Sue has worked with Joan Dudley. They, they looked at multiple districts across New York State to get really good quality examples of who's doing it right. And, you know, they stole amply from them and then also enculturated to our SAG Harbor School District. And we have more work to do because we really wanna get the students' perspective on this because it's the work they're gonna do. But our end goal was what would students take away from this at thirty-five years old? When they're thirty-five, what would they have learned from being in student government, from fundraising, from doing these different activities? And also, when any of us step away, will we have a good enough product that the students will know, you know, from being in student government, from fundraising? And that was our end goal. And I just, these guys, and then they have their commutes home. So, I just, big shout-out to them. And this is Sue's second time coming back, so thank you very much and to the whole committee, thank you.
Yeah, I wanna thank the committee just because I know you guys had a lot on your plate this year. You tackled a lot and when we finally got around to this, when you actually turned it around pretty quickly, which means that you guys put in a lot of hours in the last several weeks. Thank you for that and, and making it a priority to get it done. So, thank you so much, appreciate it. Who gets the remote?
Give it to Jeff next, Jeff.
So, past events, we had our music performances that sort of wrapped up in the beginning of June. You had the sixth grade trip to Mystic. The redesigned Global Regents. It was the first time that our students had taken the new version, which is basically covering one year of material versus what it had covered in the past, which was two years of material. So, chronologically, they just shrank the scope of the material students were assessed on. You had the High School Academic Awards on the thirty-first. And the last day for students was the eleventh of June. We're in the middle of Regents assessments right now. So, in order for students to graduate from high school, depending on the designation, they want on their diploma, they have to sit and pass a certain number of Regents assessments. Those assessments are going on through the twentieth. So, this period right now is test administration and then test grading. And some of that grading takes place here. Some of it is sent off for assessments to be scanned externally. The eighth grade moving up, I skipped a rehearsal. The moving up ceremony is on Wednesday at ten AM. On Thursday morning, following the seniors' visit to morning program, they will come back over here and they'll go through their formal high school graduation rehearsal. And then high school graduation, five PM on the Pearson Hill. And at this point, the weather looks pretty good. Here are some photos of the high school academic award ceremony. Can I in? It's the middle school chorus concert, seventh grade trip. Mr. Malone, any questions?
What time do I have to be there to watch the high school march through a morning program?
Eight fifty.
Eight fifty, okay.
Nichols? I believe, I believe some of these events we may have touched upon at the last meeting, but kindergarten show was the first, children did a great job. Then next year's kindergarten visited on the eighth for an orientation program. And then just this past Friday, with our fifth grade celebration, our, our moving up ceremony. And for those that have not attended, I know most of this room have, have been there at some time over the years. It's, it's a wonderful example of what the students do basically on a daily basis at the elementary school. It's student-centered and student-driven, they speak, they, they sing, they even, they dance a little bit. It was a real nice, nice way to highlight their talents and send them off to the middle school. I think it was a beautiful event and I thank the teachers for all the work that they put in because a lot of time and effort goes into it. Here's a few pictures. This picture on the left is Graylin Guyer, who's a fifth grader, along with Shannon Maher, one of our Spanish teachers. And Graylin was the recipient of a first-place award from the Long Island Teachers of Spanish and Portuguese. Each year, students are encouraged to enter a card-writing contest. This year, our students studied some aspect of Hispanic culture and then created a greeting card around what they learned. And Gray's card was selected as the winner across the entire island. So, that was, that was a nice recognition. Many other students were recognized as well. I think, here's a picture of our concert on the upper right. And then the baseball players from the Hampton's Collegiate Baseball League visited. I think it was the first of June. And what was, aside from the baseball piece, which definitely causes a lot of excitement, which would, what's really important for the children to hear is the majors that these athletes are studying and the colleges all across the country that they're attending. Really some top schools from, from B.C. to Brown to, I think, a University of California student. Nice, nice group of young, young men. Some pictures of the kindergarten show. They did a circus theme, if you can't see the pictures. As we, as we close out the year, one of the highlights in the science lab is the shark dissection project and they use the outdoor classroom for this for obvious reasons. It goes very well. But these pictures are great because this depicts some of the Pearson juniors and seniors who came over to help us out and even a couple of students who are visiting after, on their school break and they, they came to help along with some parents. And here are some shots of the fifth grade celebration. These pictures on the wall here are portraits that the children take and that helps decorate the space. That's a project that is supported by the Rudishan Trust every year. So, you can see the students, a couple of kids receiving their diplomas. And this was the big shot at the end, they, they had confetti. At the time, the confetti launched to some of the lyrics in one of the songs. It was, it was really, really sweet. Mr. Reed's class was highlighted in this weekend, I believe it was in News, Newsday. This is a project, the children did a large map of the colonies. In fourth grade, we study the history of America through the eyes of New York, coming all the way from Native Americans, basically as far as you can get, hopefully to present day if, if time allows. But they focused on life in the colonies. Prior to that, European exploration. Jeff Reed's students created this two-scale large map, learned about the colonies, plotted different points of interest and then actually also showed some of the paths of the European explorers. So, it was quite the project. They did, they did a great job. And then upcoming events, where I think weather's going to cooperate tomorrow. Wednesday, we have our field days, beach days on the 21st. Mr. Nichols mentioned we'll kick the day off with the senior recognition. And then the last day is the 22nd. Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Silva?
Hi. Quick little facilities update. Dealing with Stella Maris, we are, they finished their architectural review is complete. Now they're reviewing the engineering drawings. That's in progress. IBI Group, the architects, will be down on June 25th, 26th, and 27th. We set up a bunch of meetings with Core BTS Interlogic Solutions and we'll be meeting with some village stakeholders over those three days that they're down here to work on logistics of the project. We are still waiting for SED approval. Any questions on this slide?
Uh huh. What does IBI say about what they think when that appro, is it going to screw up our timeline?
We're just waiting. We're in a holding tight. We're at the mercy of SED right now.
Do they have an idea? Didn't they fast track us a pay extra on the table for a distance speed pass or something?
Yeah, I went on the site today and there was no update on where we're at with approval.
So we're holding our breath there?
We're holding our breath.
The longest part is the architectural approval and, and that's been completed. So there's not, there's not as much engineering in Stella Maris because it's, I won't use the word, but it's built like, it's built like a very strong firm.
God bless it, yeah.
Yeah, so that's a very positive step. And they are having outside companies working. And we did figure that little extra piece.
Okay. Now, wait, before I open my mouth, can we go? Yeah, all right. It's on the next page, go ahead.
Yep, okay. The windows, Pearson. They're in fabrication still. I'm waiting for them to be released so we could let everybody know when we're going to schedule them to be installed. I'm hoping that we could break this over the summer, but that's a hope on mine. So we got a lot of these.
Do we know what the holdup? I feel like they've been waiting for it forever.
They're in fabrication. I talked to Arrow Steel Windows, the contractor on the site, and they're waiting from their factory, I think it's in Jersey, not their factory, but the manufacturer of the windows. And they don't have a date yet. So I reach out to them on a daily basis. So as soon as I get something, I'll definitely pass it on to Superintendent Graves.
Did we not order them like a long time ago?
No, they've been, they've been approved. The colors have been chosen. Everything's been in place. The type of glass, the tint, everything. So we're just, I don't know what the holdup is.
There's a blessing in disguise, though. If we were putting them in right now with all the testing and everything going on, it would be terrible.
Right, that would be a problem. We have to wait for the graduations.
And it'll be terrible if they're putting them in during the summer because they'll be up against all that traffic. But having them put in during the summer when we don't have children, that will be a blessing.
As soon as I hear something, I'll definitely update.
They'll get delivered on the day school opens.
They'll be all right. They'll be fine.
And then we're working nights.
Figure it out.
We put the ones in in the elementary while school was going on.
Like on the weekends.
Yeah.
Good stuff. We are working with the architect, BBS, on the Elementary Plaza Multi-Cord Plaza, Project. They are mobilizing on June 25th because, we have to do it right after graduation because they'll be commandeering the Atlantic Street parking lot to stage the material and equipment. And then they'll be saving off the areas and protecting it because we are having summer school over there. So we'll make sure that everybody is on the same page. So we're kicking that off on the 25th. Five trees are being donated by a community member. Those are the trees, a ginkgo tree, which is actually a living fossil. I'm learning a lot about trees, by the way. I knew nothing. Becoming educated with them. So, and then a dawn redwood, which is also a living fossil, river birch native to this area, eastern white pine, and possibly another tree. So we're looking at five trees that'll be donated by larger caliber trees than, that were previously, that were specked out. So this, it's, Mr. Malone and myself are very happy about it. We also met with the Sag Harbor Tree Fund. Lily Fell, a very nice lady, they are donating two cherry trees. And that's the area that they would love to see them planted. And Summer Hill Landscapes is will be doing the install.
Is that the high school gym, with that perspective?
It is. Yes. I guess there's a parking lot there. I went to Google Earth and believe it or not, they still show the parking lot that was there.
Yes.
And so that area is kind of bare. So I think, you know, everyone would like to see some trees there. So we're going to put some cherries in there. It should be quite nice.
They were so thoughtful, the Summer Hill people. And Lily Fell is, has a wonderful, she's a wonderful florist in Bridgehampton, but she lives right across the street from the school. And she said, by donating cherry trees, they'll be in blossom at graduation and during all the celebrations. And it'll be so beautiful because the children can take pictures, you know, under there. And I thought, oh my gosh, that was so thoughtful of them. So that's, that's nice.
That's all. Any questions?
Yeah, would you take those? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm doing athletics because Eric Bramloff's son was in a big lacrosse tournament yesterday and with two minutes left in the game, got hit in the head. He's okay. He took a day off and I think he took his son to the doctor. And Eric said the worst part was that they lost the game as well. So anyway, it's all right. So sports physicals were June 4th and June 11th. The athletic awards ceremony was June 7th. A lot of work goes into the athletic awards ceremony. The Pearson administration was there and you could see the amount of work that Eric put into it. I thought the evening went well. I think he's going to try and focus on even making the event a little shorter next year. But he deserves a lot of credit for the changes that, that he's put in place. This is just some of the upcoming events. Talks about the first, first days of practice for various sports and some coaches' meetings that he's got scheduled for September. Some other stuff that he sent to me via text that right now he's trying to wrap up his coach appointments for the 18, 19 school year. He's getting pretty close. He hopes to have those recommendations ready for the reorganizational meeting. And here are some pictures of the event. And that's it. Any questions about athletics?
Thank you for having me.
Sure. Mr. Fisher.
Just to give you an update, we're, we're still on track with the board docs. The training's going to take place early July. He said that's scheduled for at this point. So we should be on schedule. I haven't heard anything otherwise to say that we're not on schedule for that. So I will be following up with them. And we're also moving forward with the Apogee product, which is going to improve the communication throughout the district and give us a much stronger web and mobile presence. We expect to go live with that in August. Maybe a little bit early, but rather play it safe and say in August. That's going to give us greater control. It's also going to give some of the building administrators that they don't have right now, the ability to do updates live and from their phone. So they don't have to, you know, send it and wait for downtime and everything else. As things are happening, they'll be able to make the public aware of that, whether it's on the website or through the mobile app. We will have a new mobile app available to the district residents and we will have the ability for messages to be sent via text message if they opt into that. We're also gearing up, I know it sounds strange, gearing up for the end of the year in the summer. That's when we get quite a bit of work done over the summer. I mean, seeing the agenda tonight, there's the recommendation to appoint some of the student members like we do each summer. And with the kids, we never get them all. So that's why you see so many on the agenda. They're not all working on summer. This one's going away for vacation this week. And so we put a bunch of kids on so we make sure we have enough coverage throughout the summer. But we have some, some interesting things planned for the summer as well. So that will be ready to go for the start of the new school year. Any other questions?
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Superintendent Graves, a quick report on, from the Business Department. So our annual audit is already underway. Colin Danowski was here for their pre-audit. They sent their team in two weeks ago. My department made ourselves completely accessible to them. They looked through our payroll records, paid bills, an array of documents to, to prepare, surveys, questionnaires, all that. Also, the Subcommittee for Facilities is working on the survey to name former Stella Maris building with the postcard and the instrument. You will see them tonight. They're part of the PowerPoint. And one of our esteemed members of the committee is here tonight, Dominic LaPierre, to give a brief update shortly. We're involved through Katie, through Superintendent Graves, the ground floor with Suffolk County Shared Services Committee. I attended one meeting. Tom attended a meeting last week. Katie was one of the initiating members of that. And we're learning more. They're starting to hold more meetings. And the whole premise behind it is for our district to have the ability to purchase goods and services through a Suffolk County-wide system that would be inclusive of virtually every agency in New York State and Long Island. So we're learning more about that. And the hope is that not only can we buy things, but we can share services, whether it be painting a building, a new roof, siding, particularly if they've got a crew of construction people coming out here from a company and doing local school districts or municipalities such as water districts, fire districts, and they're out here anyway. We can get an economy of scale with the purchase price on that service. And that's what we're, we're working towards. Civil Service was here for an onsite inspection last week to audit all of our job titles and descriptions. We provided them with everything they asked for. We're awaiting their report. We do know that there might be some changes we need to make. And I'll work with Superintendent Graves to make sure that we take care of that. We're also working with the Suffolk County Department of Health on reporting requirements for food service operations, particularly to provide food service in the elementary school. There's a really large brief that we need to prepare that I spoke with the investigator last week. And we're going to, it's all got to do with transportation, temperature control, maintaining the quality of the food, the consistency, refrigeration. So there are a lot of elements that we need to address in this document. And so I'm going to need this summer to go through that and vet that and, and structure that report for them. We conducted all of our competitive bids for essential services such as, and you may have seen that in the newspapers in the last couple of weeks, you'll be voting on those items tonight. But electrical, plumbing, refuge, assistible service, all that's being voted on tonight. And I may have, I believe I mentioned at a previous meeting when we were doing the structuring of the budget, about three years ago, the state changed the process for business officials in school districts. And we don't just go for the lowest price now. We look at, we called our Ps and Qs. We look at price and quality. So when we select a vendor for each of these services, we're looking at the price tag, but we're also looking at the quality of the services that they can render to the district. And then we're just implementing the specific details related to the recently approved teacher's contract with payroll and benefits. So I had a huge meeting with the Business Department last week because the implementation process, going back in time, making sure that every employee is properly paid and, and the benefits and the payroll is reflective of what they're entitled to. Katie, did you want me to keep going with this or?
I think we were going to have, we're.
Dominic?
Yep.
Okay.
Any questions for the business office? Thank you, Dr. Ketter.
You're very welcome. Dominic?
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Oh, you had to teach me something?
You know.
Oh, my God.
You want me to do it for you?
You can do it.
I'll do it.
Hi, everybody. Dominic LaPierre, a community member, Educational Facility Planning Committee.
Subcommittee.
Subcommittee. I tried it on a car here and I knew it was going to get in front of everybody and the public record. Oh. So I was here two weeks ago, answered some brief questions, I believe. We've, I think we're generally finalized with the survey, at least internally in our internal review within the committee. Some postcards have been prepared. And I think that we're going to be issuing this sometime in the early fall, is my understanding right now. And we're going to have the results back to you probably two, maybe three weeks after that when it's due. I think that we'll likely have some solid material to talk about. We've been talking within the committee that one of the goals of the survey is to generate some data, some impressions of the community, what they see the naming might want to be, what they don't want to be, who's out there answering the surveys. It's always really nice to know who's paying attention. So I'm hopeful that we'll have something really thoughtful to talk about in the fall.
And Scott did put up the questions. He put the whole survey up there for you.
All right. So are we allowed to show that?
You can walk it through if you do it really quick.
All right. So I think there's an opening page here that says, hey.
That was the previous slide.
As the previous came back up.
There we go.
There we go. So hey, it's saying, we bought the building. This is why we bought the building. And there's a link to the history about the conversations to purchasing the building, which we thought was important for maybe some newer community members who haven't, weren't involved around in, believe it or not, May 2016, when the election was held. Next slide. So you're going to have to help me here. So these questions are very general here. How do you feel about having the name Sag Harbor in the title of the facility? Next slide. Is it important that Stella Maris be included in the name? And the first slide talks a little bit about what Stella Maris means, what its translation is. And we have here, Scott and, Scott and the committee and I talked about it, it's a ranking here. I think it's, Scott, is it one through five, 10?
One through 10.
One through 10.
Zero is a no, 10 is a solid, happy, yes.
So we can get, you know, there's always people who don't want to make it an eight and they want to make a seven and a half, but they're going to have to decide. Next slide. We talked a little bit about maybe suggesting some names, not solid names, but maybe the fact that we might want to name it after someone in the community. And we focused here on the Sage family who's donated a lot to our community over the years. But also, I think this is a bit of a lead-in to get people to start thinking about the opportunity of actually having a name. Because the next questions start to, oh, this is Stella here, the translation is Stella, for those that don't remember their history. And next slide. And then we start opening up the conversation a little bit within the survey. Do you have a suggestion? And the next slide is, why'd you suggest that? And that will start, I'm not really sure how we're going to organize those last two questions. But my hope is that, wouldn't it be great if some consensus popped up with the last two questions? Wouldn't that be wonderful? My life doesn't work that way, but that'd be really great.
That's optimistic.
And then we start asking some questions about who you are. And I'd like to think that the board will be able to use some of this data in the future to understand who's out there, who's paying attention, who's taking the time to answer these surveys. And so there's a long list here, staff, alumni, students, parents of former students, parents of current students, so forth. We start asking how old you are. Next slide.
That's it?
That's it.
That's it.
So our hope is that it's going to be done really quickly because there's not many questions.
When does it go out?
Well, we got some good feedback from board members when I put this out that said, you know, we already had people that have rented their houses and are gone.
Right.
And we are not, and we as a committee said, we're not in that much of a hurry because we're just going to be breaking ground this summer. So we thought that this might be great to do this during the month of September.
Right.
So everybody's coming back, everybody's energized. So we send out the, after, at Labor Day, we send out the cards that say to every resident, everybody that's a resident that's in the, in the district, would get the card saying, hey, there's a survey, we really want your opinion, like we did when we did the Stella Maris, what would you want to use Stella Maris for? And this would be, hey, we want your input. So go to the website. It would have a link there for taking it. And we would also leave surveys, this survey at the two schools, paper surveys, because there's people that are computer phobic, and at the John Jermaine Library, so that we would also enter those. would also enter those, which was what we did the last time.
So, I think it's a great idea to, as far as fall to September, you're also gonna be able to grab some of the younger parents who, you know, aren't on the radar screen of the facility yet or the school. They're just figuring out what they're gonna be doing with the kids this summer. So, that's a really good idea.
And having the postcards also just available at school events from Labor Day through, like, the first week of October.
Yeah.
And that gives them a good, solid four weeks to take the survey. And that would give us to mid-October to get back to the board and say, here's what we're finding out.
What I wanted to mention, the Subcommittee's been very active in doing this. And part of our discussion last week was, we wanted to structure a survey that was eight questions, was a combination quantitative, qualitative, and provided some demographics. And we think that will accomplish this with the eight questions. So, I wanna thank the whole Subcommittee, particularly Dominic and Scott for structuring this, and Marcus and the whole crew for all that you've all done. Thank you.
I have a logistical question, and it might be a Scott question. How does it work with numerous people in the household in one device, or one person in the household in numerous devices? Like, I would assume that we've gotta go ahead and assume it's not the most...
It's, you're absolutely right. There's really, there are ways to do that, but that requires people registering, and it gets much more complicated. The last thing we wanna do is put obstacles in the way of people doing this. So, but you're absolutely right. We need to be mindful of, when reviewing the results, that if they start to look a little skewed, there could be a good reason that it could be easily accomplished. So, this is not scientific in any means. It's more just to gauge the pulse of the community and give us a starting point or direction to go in. But there is certainly a potential for someone, multiple people, to skew the data.
If they felt passionate about it.
Correct.
It's not a vote. It's definitely not a vote.
Okay.
And I also wanna recognize Chris Arby and Denise Reeve for being on the committee as well, as also Superintendent Graves.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Any questions from the board?
Well, I was curious. So, did the Subcommittee brainstorm any names itself?
So, I generated a list. It was pretty comprehensive. It was not in any way very thought out. It had a list of suggestions of people in the community. It had a variety of names that tied into Sag Harbor and other schools that you've seen around the country. You know, there's a lot of buzzwords that you hear in the educational field.
Right. So, of those that you came up with, did the Subcommittee gravitate to any of them?
None stuck.
Nothing.
We kinda wanna see what the community comes back to us with.
Yeah. I mean, that really wasn't the charge we were... We were not charged with coming up with the name. We were charged with coming up with the process for coming up with the name.
I was just curious. Thank you. Any other questions? Is there any other reports? All right. So, we will move on to the Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion to approve Consent Agenda items one through four?
Okay. Nobody talk. So moved!
Second?
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right. Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve Special Education items five through 12?
Don't move. So moved!
Second?
Any discussion?
Just one quick question. I think it'd just be helpful for the community with all these specialized contracts. Katie, can you just give a little overview of what those are for? You know, services in-house, and a couple of them, the ones that are out, those for students that come out of districts that are coming here.
So, we have summer programming. So, because the summer programming starts on July 2nd, we're, these would normally be embedded in the reorganizational meeting, but because we have summer programming, we can't pay for reorganizing. So, these are, these are contracts that go year-round. So, when you talk about occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapies, these are services that we use. And there are also contracts that we have for children that are tuitioned in, that we provide services for, for other school districts. So, they send our children to them. And we're gonna be providing services for them right away, come July 2nd. So, that, that would be an example of that. So, we have to establish those right away. Consultant services for, again, these are, these are all services that we use, so we can hit the ground running.
And then, I had emailed earlier today just some minor typos in the last one. The girl that emailed, just at number 12, there were some really minor typos in that contract.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve Business Items 13?
So moved!
Second?
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, who seconded? I did. Second, yeah.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. We have, on the Personnel Actions, we have a typo 141 that I want to bring to your attention. The stipend for the S, the Extended SA Coordinator should read 8,000 for 17, 18. And it was 4,000, not 1,000 for 16, 17. So, if I'm reading it correctly, I think that would be a 100% increase. Do you wanna shed some light on that for us, Jeff?
Sure. When the position was originally budgeted for five or six years ago, we anticipated about 15 students in a diploma cohort. So, the workload for the Extended SA Coordinator was 15 students. This past year, we were up to about 35. So, it was an unusual drop, jump. So, what we did is we came up with a sliding scale in consultation with our school attorney. And that, that was approved by the board, and that's what the salary represents.
Perfect. Appreciate that. So, there's also, under Personnel Actions, there's an addendum. You should have it on your desk. Number 47. So, this is not the original, this one just went out public, so this is just added today for summer MAP enrichment. So, we're gonna add that one as well, number 47. So, can I get a motion to approve Personnel Actions 35 through 47?
This is the last time I get to do this. So moved!
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. So, now we move into the committee reports. EFPC has already...
Did we also wanna say with regret that folks that are retired are...
Absolutely. Policy Committee did that, right?
I think we've done that.
Yep. We did that one. We did the EFPC. Anything from our liaisons? Any reports?
Yep. Can I just ask, your reorganizing is the 9th of July. Do you think that you will get to your liaison appointments in that meeting, or is that being aggressive?
Well, I was thinking about that as we were listening to our reports tonight. We will have to make some adjustments, obviously, this next year. And so, what I will do is I will post out where we are now. I think one of the big shifts we made the last year was that committees are just gonna roll over and, and we can continue our work in the summer. So, a lot of the charters reflect that. So, I think I would just see if there are board members that would like to pick up any of the liaisons or committees that don't have board members on them, or if there's any adjustments that you wanna make. It seems to me that July would, the reorg would be a good time to just see if anybody wants to make any switching of seats.
Okay.
So, I'll send an email out, kind of reminding everybody where they're at, and what, who's where, and which seats are open.
Okay. So, just, if you can, in the back of your mind, Wednesday, July 11th, which is only two days after your reorg, is the first hardboard meeting of their new year.
Okay.
And so, a representative will have to go.
Okay. Appreciate that.
And can I just, one other thing? We didn't also publicly thank, I mean, we acknowledged it before when they did the presentation about the treaties, especially that's Mrs. Snicky family and the others. So, we obviously just approved that, and that we are so happy about that, and to thank them.
Oh, my gosh. Absolutely. Absolutely. Any other items for discussion or unfinished business? Anything else from the board?
Yeah. I just also wanted to say how much I'm gonna miss Stephanie. Make us all laugh very much, but you're also an outstanding board member. It's been a real pleasure to serve with you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other items for discussion or unfinished business? All right. Public input, too. Anybody for public?
Oh, that would be me! Now, I'm really sorry that Linda left, because the Vittis family had a calculator that we don't own. And I hear they're pretty expensive. Can I just tell you, the worst seat... Hey, Nada, can you hear them today? You can see them, right?
Yes!
Okay. The worst seat, I know you knew, but the air conditioner...
Did you see me button up my sweater?
You need to buy a shawl. Do you have a timer?
I got it.
Shut it off.
I'm gonna give you three of them.
Do you know how many meetings I've been in?
I'm sure you counted.
I'll tell you. 216.
Are you counting?
Okay. Six minutes. I'm sorry. I'm really, really, wait, just, she's taking my picture.
Wait a minute.
Don't worry. Don't get nervous. Don't get nervous. So, similar to Barbara, I have been psychologically preparing to retire for three very long years. And here's how this goes. So, in a few short days, who's counting, on June 30th at 11:59 PM, I go from being a trustee of the Sag Harbor Union Free School District back to being a mom. So, for the same reason I ran three years ago, I depart. In September, my kids are gonna be a junior and a senior. And any parent or guardian knows, when you get to that point, that clock is ticking very loudly against you. Because when they graduate on that hill and they leave, your life changes. And I'm sorry back there, because you're gonna take my seat, but I'm going to spend as much time home at the dinner table in the next two years as I possibly can. So, tonight, and I promise I won't do anything bad, it's all about some thank yous. I had no idea what being on the Board of Ed meant when I ran. And after the excitement of the appointment wears off, the reality of this job is overwhelming. The jargon alone, TASH, SED, BOSI, STEP, I had no idea what anybody was talking about for you. So, first, I wanna thank the current and past board members that were here during my three-year tenure for your service. Because unless you sit here, you have no idea the sacrifice a board member makes. I shouldn't be talking to you. I'm really talking to you. The time commitment alone is a full-time job, so thank you for carrying on without me. A special thank you to Diana as Board President. You handled a, sorry, thankless position with grace and diplomacy. I think every child, parent, and community member benefited from your dedication, so thank you. To our administrators, I had personal opinions of some of you when I walked in and sat down there for the first time. Now, I know that if I had a cabinet to pick of my own, at my own company, I'd ask each of you to have a seat. It's obvious to me, Jeff, why you would lead this building, and you have for so many years. And I learned a lot from you in three years watching, and I admire how you handle everything that gets thrown at you. Sometimes I think being the principal is the I Love Lucy episode, when the chocolate comes past and you can rap. And I've watched you do it effortlessly. Mike with tenure is a perfect, perfect role model for our IB and our high school students. And at the high school graduation of June of 2020, I think I will be equally as proud of my son as I will be of Brittany. Because that will be Brittany's first full sixth to 12th grade graduating class. And somehow, I know, as each of them are handed a diploma, that you connected, inspired, and did something wonderful for every single one of them, and you've touched them in some way. I think you're the future of Pearson. The elementary school, Matt, Betty, and if I may, include my good friend Donna Denne. I changed the entire course of my life to allow my kids to go to school there. I believe the foundation that you provide every child in that building is precious. Don't ever change a thing. Matt, your leadership and heart of gold touches those kids' lives forever. Everybody, me included, has a picture of Matt Malone shaking a hand and handing a diploma. I'm gonna sing that birthday jingling song for the rest of my life. I'm gonna call my kids in college this birthday song, I jiggleyling, and I'm gonna come to our morning program, invited or not. To Barbara, who's leaving, Eric, I hope you didn't get hurt bad. I hate that lacrosse. From personal experience, I saw. Scott, Marcus, Dr. Phil, and Vicki, I'm making you your own department head. My thanks. You lead departments with dedication and professionalism, and without it, and each of you, I think the school will come to a screeching halt. In addition, from custodial staff to lunchrooms, to bus drivers, to crossing guards, to administrative assistants, my thanks, because you're all unsung heroes. I would be remiss not to thank Mary Adomcheck and Jennifer Buscemi, who during my tenure made tremendous contributions to this district, and I will personally be forever grateful to that. Katie, let there be no doubt that our superintendent, in public and behind closed doors, works every day to do this exact thing, what is best for children, fair for adults, and what the community can sustain. If only every member in the community could have witnessed you in action like I did. I'd like to take a moment to personally thank your husband, Glenn, and your family, because they have sacrificed much by sharing you with us. I can't imagine the district without you, but I also know, Boyne, the superintendent, is hard, and you can't please everyone. But you, Katie, have led us through building projects and purchases, policy changes and contract negotiations, board member turnover, surveys, lively debates, and daily challenges with the biggest heart on the planet. The prize for you has always been the kids. So, I thank you. For the record camera, you ready? Every word I spoke in public in front of you, camera, and in closed executive session, I would repeat. And every vote I cast, given a chance to do over, I would do the same. Lastly, I'll tell you why I was lucky to be on the Board of Ed. For a lot of years to come, I'm gonna drive past these schools, but I'm gonna look at them in a much, much different way than most people, because I spend a lot of time inside of them. So, I really know what goes on, and I'm gonna share. The very important Board of Ed and the very important administrators are not the VIPs. We sit around debating policy, contract renewals, sidewalks, trees, district calendars, snow days, start times, and paint colors, but the heroes are the teachers. If any of them watched these videos... They ignite imagination and shape curiosity in my order of importance, in song, in math, in gym, in science, in art, in English, in history, in French, in sports, in Spanish, in character and in confidence to allow these kids in this district to become whatever they want. So, out of all the hard jobs in the school, the teachers, I think, are the real VIPs. With all of that said, something I've been waiting two years and three-hundred-and-sixty-four days to do, you ready? Bit us out.
Anybody wanna follow that up, Republican put two? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Have a great night, everybody.
Yo!